Good evening and welcome to and thank you for joining GSA's public hearing for the Grand Portage Land Port of Entry Modernization Expansion Environmental Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Also referred to as the Draft EIS. Presentation will begin shortly and will be followed by a comment session. For those of you joining virtually, your audio will be muted for the duration of the presentation until the public commenting portion, when you will then have a chance to provide comments. Instructions for joining your audio are here on the provided screen. If you're having any technical difficulties or trouble with joining your audio connection, please communicate that issue in the chat box feature and our team will attempt to spoil. We're going to give folks a little more time to join, but the meeting will begin here promptly at 5:30 PM Central Time. Thank you. On behalf of the US General Services Administration, commonly known as GSA, and the US Customs and Border Protection Agency, often referred to as CBP. We would like to welcome you to this hybrid public hearing for the draft environmental impact statement for the proposed modernization and expansion of the Grand Portage, Grand Portage Land Port of Entry in Grand Portage, Minnesota. GSA has prepared a draft environmental impact statement, or EIS for short, in accordance with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, typically abbreviated as NEPA. GSA is the lead agency for the EIS development with input and expertise from CBP, as well as the Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, who is serving as a cooperating agency. My name is Paul DiPaolo and I am a contractor with a firm called Potomac Hudson Engineering, or PHE, supporting GSA in the development of the EIS. We thank you for taking the time to participate in today's public hearing and welcome your comments and feedback. Today's hearing will include a presentation by GSA and PHE regarding the proposed project and the findings of the draft EIS. Presentation will also include discussions of the NEPA process and the National Historic Preservation Act planning process, which pertains to the protection of cultural resources. This hearing is being held in a hybrid format. The presentation is being given as part of an in-person hearing at the Grand Portage State Park Welcome Center. It is also being provided virtually over the Zoom platform. Before we go into the details of today's hearing, there are a few housekeeping items to cover. For those accessing the hearing through the Zoom platform, you will see a toolbar at the bottom of your screen that allows you to send a chat message to the presenters. Please do not use this public, this chat to submit a public comment. There are other ways to do that, which we will discuss later, but do feel free to send us a note if you encounter any technical issues during the hearing. There's a graphic here on the slide that illustrates how to post in the Zoom chat in the Zoom chat box. Please note, if you would like to view, view closed captioning, you can click on the show captions button on the bottom of your screen. The microphones for all virtual attendees will be muted until it is time to hear comments, which will happen after the initial presentation from the team. At that time, we will revisit instructions for how to speak. For those of you attending in person, who may, who may wish to provide a comment later, if you've not already done so, please take the time now to walk over to, walk over to the sign in table and there's a checkbox where you can, next to your name, where you can sign in or sign up, I'm sorry. Please know that we'll be keeping track of who is speaking and noting all verbal public comments for the project record. GSA will not be responding in depth to technical questions or comments regarding the project during today's, today's hearing. Informal responses will be provided in the final EIS. However, GSA will clarify anything in the presentation relating to the project, the NEPA process, or opportunities for public involvement. A copy of this presentation is available on the GSA website at the link here posted on the slide. We'll also place it in the chat box here. You can also find this by searching online, by searching GSA Grand Portage Land Port of Entry. Lastly, please note that this public hearing is being recorded and will be included in the project record. By remaining in the meeting, attendees are agreeing to being recorded. If you do not agree to this, we ask you leave the meeting at this time. Next slide. We will be covering several topics today, including introductions of key project staff, the purpose of the hearing, a description of the two key federal laws relevant to the project, NEPA, and the National Historic Preservation Act. We'll then provide a timeline for the EIS process, information on the project background, the purpose and need for the project, summaries of the project alternatives that are analyzed in the draft EIS, and then followed by a discussion of environmental resources that were evaluated and the potential impacts resulting from the project. At the end of the presentation, we'll discuss next steps and provide more information on how to submit public comments. Then we'll open the floor for any public comments that want to be provided here today. Next slide. So as I mentioned, my name is Paul DiPaolo. I am a contractor hired by GSA to assist in the preparation of the EIS. I am joined here by GSA staff members, including Michael Gonzar, GSA's Region Five NEPA Program Manager. Also present from GSA is Dan Kamen, the Project Contracting Officer's Representative, and attending virtually Regina Nally, GSA's Regional Historic Preservation Officer. Representatives from the Grand Portage Band are also in attendance today, but will not be speaking, at least not till the public comment session potentially. And I'm also joined by Matt Visatelli of Search, who will be providing support for completing the National Historic Preservation Act Planning Processes. Other GSA, CBP, and PHE staff are also in attendance, but will not be presenting. Next slide. So the purpose of the hearing. So today's presentation will provide a general understanding of the NEPA process, information about the project, and the National Historic Preservation Planning Act process. The project overview and discussion of potential impacts will be, will be general, as the main purpose of tonight's hearing is to give the public an opportunity to provide comment on the findings of the draft EIS and the project, which will be considered as we move to the final EIS stage. In carrying out responsibilities underneath a, GSA is committed to ensuring that the proper consideration is provided to the quality of the natural, human, and cultural environment. This public hearing is, is, is an important opportunity for you, the public, to provide your comments on the proposed Grand Portage, Grand Portage Land Port of Entry Modernization and Expansion Project, as well as the draft EIS findings. I'll now turn the presentation over to Michael Gonzar with GSA, who will provide a little more detail on NEPA.
Great. Thank you, Paul, and thank you everyone for coming out tonight for braving the cold rain and the tough weather out there. We really appreciate your presence here today. So NEPA overview. So NEPA is the nation's legislative charter for the protection of the environment, and it provides for the consideration of environmental issues and federal agency planning and decision-making. NEPA requires agencies to prepare a document to consider whether a proposed action may significantly impact the quality of the natural, human, and cultural environment. In our case, the NEPA document is an EIS. This EIS informs GSA decision-makers and the public about the potential environmental impacts of implementing the proposed action and is made publicly available. NEPA does not mandate a particular decision, but it does ensure that the public is engaged in the assessment and that GSA's decisions are appropriately informed. To better inform GSA's decision-making, the Grand Portage Band is serving as a cooperating agency, which we'll discuss more in a couple of slides. The EIS process allows for the public to provide input during both a public scoping meeting and a draft EIS public comment period, which we are currently in. This input will be taken into consideration by GSA during the decision-making process and will be included as a part of the project record. I will now turn it over to Regina Nally with GSA, who will discuss required associated with the National Historic Preservation Act. Regina?
Thanks, Michael. Excuse me. So the National Historic Preservation Act is a federal law that protects cultural resources and historic properties across the nation through guidance and regulations. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act establishes regulations and processes requiring federal agencies like GSA to evaluate properties for cultural and historic significance, whether they are districts, sites, structures, or objects. This evaluation includes significance to traditional religious or cultural importance to tribes or native Hawaiian organizations for properties that meet the National Register of Historic Places eligibility criteria. In this case, no sites within the land port of entry study area are listed or eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. The section 106 process has been initiated and is ongoing, and we have completed a historic structure survey and an archaeological survey, and those findings are in the EIS report itself. GSA's section 106 consultation with the tribal historic preservation officer are ongoing and are in alignment with the National Environmental Policy Act and the schedule that is following for that process. I will turn it over to, I was taking the next slide. Michael, we can't hear you. I think you guys are on mute.
All right. You guys get to hear that all over again. Person. All right. Thank you so much, Regina. So, given the project's location within the Grand Portage Reservation, and GSA recognizes the importance in maintaining close collaboration with the tribe, their key interests in the project, as well as the need to respect tribal resources and concerns. As such, GSA has entered into a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with the tribe for them to serve as what's known as a cooperating agency. This means that GSA is working closely with the tribe in preparation of the NEPA document, including exchanging of critical information, conducting internal document reviews, and participating in ongoing meetings to ensure that tribal considerations are thoroughly addressed and respected throughout the NEPA process. Collaboration will not end with the NEPA process, as GSA is engaging with the tribe in a larger design of the port. Next slide, please. So this is the EIS timeline, and this provides an overview of the EIS timeline. On September 22nd, 2023, GSA published a notice of intent, or NOI, in the Federal Register announcing the intention to prepare an EIS. This, oh, excuse me. Pardon me. Excuse me. Okay, so this project area, therefore, no. Excuse us one moment.
You would think this would be.
Great, thank you. Some technical difficulties. All right, so GSA published a notice of intent in the Federal Register announcing the intention to prepare an EIS. This notice initiated a 30-day public scoping period and also announced the public scoping meeting that occurred on October 5th, 2023. After the close of the scoping period and consideration of the comments received, GSA conducted a detailed analysis of the impacts and alternatives to the project and prepared the draft EIS. A notice in the Federal Register announced on November 1st, 2024, that the draft EIS was available to the public for a 45-day review and comment period, which ends on December 16th, 2024. At the close of this comment period, GSA will consider all substantive comments in preparation of the final EIS, which is anticipated to be published in the spring of 2025. GSA will notify the public when the final EIS is available for public review. NEPA requires a 30-day waiting period after publication of the final EIS before an agency can complete its record of decision, also referred to as a ROD. Issuance of the ROD signifies the end of the NEPA process. The ROD explains an agency's decision, describes the alternatives that were considered, and discusses plans for mitigation and monitoring, if needed. I will now turn it over to Paul DiPaolo to give a little more detail on the project background and GSA's proposed action. Paul?
Thanks, Michael. The Grand Portage Land Port of Entry is located between the far northeast tip of the state, of the state and the Canadian province of Ontario, where the Pigeon River meets Lake Superior on the Grand Portage Reservation. It serves as a port of entry for vehicles and pedestrians crossing the US Canada border between, between Grand Portage and Nebing, Ontario. The board is operated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and operated by CBP. CBP officers inspect all types of commercial and non-commercial traffic, including pedestrians at the port. Next slide. This slide depicts the current layout of the port. It contains a main building, which was built around 1961, with primary and secondary inspection canopies, secondary inspection garage, and a public restroom facility located between the north and southbound lanes of Highway 61. There are two inbound primary inspection lanes at the port, one for non-commercial vehicles and one for buses and commercial traffic. A commercial inspection dock and garage lie north of the inbound lanes of Highway 61. There are currently no outbound inspection capabilities at the port. Next slide. A feasibility study was completed for the port, for the port project in 2019. This study concluded that the existing facility does not meet square footage requirements for CBP's program of requirements and identified three alternatives for expanding, expanding and modernizing the port. A program development study, or PDS, was initiated as the next step in, in the planning process and planning and development process. Three new alternatives were identified and refined in coordination with the Grand Portage Band to narrow down a single action alternative to carry forward for further evaluation. The operational footprint of this alternative would remain within the Highway 61 easement, although a small temporary incursion outside of this area would be necessary for construction. Next slide. So the purpose, the purpose and need for the project, the why. The purpose of the project is for GSA to support CBP's mission by bringing the port operations in line with current land port design standards and operational requirements, while addressing existing deficiencies, which mainly fall in two broad categories. Deficiencies in the overall site layout and substandard building conditions. These deficiencies result in traffic congestion during peak season, peak season, safety issues for the public and workers, and inefficient building space that hinders the agency's ability to effectively conduct their missions. Therefore, in order to bring the port operations in line with CBP design standards and operational requirements, the project is needed to improve the capacity and functionality of the port to meet future demand while maintaining the capability to meet border security initiatives and to provide for the expeditious and safe inspection of the traveling public. Excellent. This figure, this figure provides an overview of the proposed limits of construction. Please note that the limits of construction for the three-phase power line, which we'll get in here, get into here in a minute, have been shifted to be a little further, I guess, to the south here, within the white dash line, which represents the Highway 61 easement. This change occurred after the issuance of the draft EIS a couple of weeks ago. So these figures will shift in the final EIS, basically to have that kind of area that's to the north of the white dash line to be inside the port there. Or the highway, the easement there. Uh, next slide. So as part of the project, GSA would establish applicable agreements with the Grand Portage Band and in coordination with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, or MINDOT, to expand the port footprint from the current 5.7 acres to approximately 10.4 acres. This area is largely reflective of the footprint shown on. Did we go, did we go? Missed a slide. I might be mixed up here, but it's reflective of the footprint shown on a forthcoming slide here that will show here in a minute. With again, the exception of a small temporary incursion outside of the MINDOT easement on the north end. Construction will be conducted using a phased, phased approach, which would allow the port to remain open and operational throughout construction. The project includes construction of new, new commercial inspection building, main port building, inspection areas, utilities, and paving. GSA is also considering installing renewable energy technologies, potentially either geothermal or solar. GSA would meet or exceed energy and sustainability goals established by federal guidelines and policies, along with industry standing standard building codes and best practices. Overall, operations would be, would be comparable to current conditions, but would be conducted more efficiently. And I'm seeing, I'm hoping we didn't get kicked off the wifi. You know, it might have gotten kicked off the wifi here, so.
No, I still hear you.
Bear with us real quick. Sorry about that. Challenges of having a hybrid meeting. So on to slide 16. And this is the layout I mentioned in the previous, previous slide depicting the conceptual layout. Again, this is conceptual. Subject to change as GSA continues with the, with the design and planning process. But again, as you can see, the operational footprint would remain within the easement. Again, that pink line right there represents the three-phase power line. We'll go into a little more detail here that will shift to be within that blue, or that, I'm sorry, the lighter pink dashed area. Next slide. So the three-phase power line, which we've mentioned a couple of times now, that would include upgrades to the electrical distribution system leading to the lamp, to the land port. GSA, in cooperation with a local utility provider, Arrowhead Cooperative, would install a 7.3-mile buried power line within Arrowhead's existing utility right-of-way, also referred to as a ROW for short, along the western side of Highway 61 to provide upgraded power to the modernized and expanded port. The proposed power line would be buried up to three. The proposed power line would be buried up to three feet below surface and ground cover would be stabilized and restored following, uh, installation. Construction of that power line is anticipated to be, be performed only during daylight hours and completed approximately one month during the construction season. No road closures along Highway sixty-one are expected, uh, during construction, um, as all activities would incur within the existing right-of-way. There, uh, there would be some crossings of intersections and secondary roads along this route, but, uh, but crossings would be bored underneath the road and crossings of any gravel roads would be trenched and restored, uh, uh, shortly thereafter. No tree clearing is required, is anticipated, um, during construction as all activities would be located within the existing ROW um, and across existing paved surfaces. If for any reason tree clearing is needed, it would be done outside of applicable, uh, nesting seasons for protected, uh, species. Next slide. So this slide depicts, uh, that proposed route of where, uh, the power line would originate. Um, it would originate approximately northwest of the intersection of Mineral Center Road and Highway sixty-one. Uh, and we then proceed along the western side of Highway sixty-one within the ROW, uh, to where it would terminate, uh, at the port. Um, and again, GSA would coordinate with the, with, uh, Grand Portage Band, uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation and Arrowhead for use in the ROW. So the product alternatives considered in the EIS. GSA team working with the Grand Portage Band have identified two alternatives to be analyzed in the EIS. Um, alternative one, which is to construct the facilities as described, um, previously. Um, and then the no-action alternative, which represents an alternative that would maintain the status quo. Um, under this alternative, there would be no construction, um, of a new, of new facilities, uh, to replace the port, uh, existing facilities. Um, operation would remain similar to current conditions, um, but capacity and efficiency would likely degrade over time. Uh, existing deficiencies would remain and worsen over time and compromise CBP's mission to protect and secure the nation's border. Next slide. So as part of the CIS, GSA analyzed potential impacts on various human and natural environmental resources within the project area. Um, in addition to the feasibility study we mentioned earlier, uh, the resource analyses have been informed by various supporting surveys and studies, um, including a phase one and phase two environmental site assessment, uh, historic structure survey, and archaeological literature search, uh, as well as other scientific reports and resources, as well as through course, close coordination with the tribe. The tables in the following slides will provide a summary of the project impacts on the environmental resources resulting from the implementation of the alternatives. In our case, the alternatives analyzed in the IS alternative one, which is GSA's proposed action and the no-action alternative. The evaluation of impacts considers potential, potential effects that would occur during both construction and operations. And we'll go into all the details for each of the resources, but we'll touch on a few of the highlights under alternative one. Um, for the no-action alternative impacts range from negligible to moderate, with those impacts associated with continued degradation of facilities, traffic delays during peak periods, and increased maintenance requirements over time. Please refer to the draft EIS for more detailed discussion of the existing conditions and impact analyses for each resource area. And for those attending in person, the summaries are also available, um, on the poster boards back here, uh, to my right, uh, which can be viewed after the presentation. And also a reminder, this presentation will be available online after this meeting on the project, on GSA's project website. Excellent. I know it's a little small, uh, for those here in person, but I'll try to, uh, try to cover some of the highlights. Uh, so this slide presents impacts on the geologic resources, uh, on geologic resources and water resources. Uh, potential adverse impacts from the project on these resources range from negligible to moderate, with the majority of impacts occurring during construction. Uh, the total maximum land disturbance for the port project would be approximately ten-point-four acres, of which approximately one-point-five acres are delineated wetlands, resulting in just under one acre of wetlands being permanently removed. The total maximum land disturbance for installing the three-phase power line would be thirteen-point-three acres, which may temporarily affect up to point-three acres of wetlands along the route. It is expected that the maximum net increase in impervious, pervious surface area at the port would be around a half acre. GSA will consult with all necessary parties, inclu- including the US Army Corps of Engineers and the Grand Portage Band to obtain necessary permits to manage and mitigate impacts to wetlands. There'd be minimal grading required at the port, although excavation down to ten feet below ground surface could be required. Construction activities could result in some soil erosion and sedimentation issues in the Pigeon River, although GSA would be required to apply for, apply for a stormwater-related construction permit and have it certified by the Grand Portage Band, which would minimize potential impacts to water resources. Uh, for any construction of a geothermal system, boreholes may be installed, um, as well as for any new potable water supply that would be installed at the port. Construction of boreholes will be, be done consistent with Minnesota Department of Health standards, which would minimize any potential impacts to groundwater quality. In the long term, replacement of currently outdated stormwater infrastructure and use of low-impact development would result in beneficial impacts near, nearby surface waters. Next slide. This slide presents impacts to biological resources, air quality and climate change, and the noise environment. Potential adverse impacts on these resources generally range from negligible to moderate, but included potential beneficial impacts from improved, uh, air quality as a result of increased energy efficiency features, uh, of the new facility and from reduced wait time vehicle, for vehicles at, uh, the port during peak periods. The majority of adverse impacts to air quality and the noise environment would be limited to construction phase, primarily from the use of construction equipment and vehicles. Numerous best, best management practices would be employed to limit construction noise levels and, uh, vehicle emissions. For biological resources, GSA has completed consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife related to potential effects on special status species. GSA has determined that with implementation of identified avoidance measures, no adverse effects on protected species are expected from the project. There could be some temporary and minor disturbances to wildlife or migratory birds that inhabit the area near the footprint during construction. Just under one acre of tree removal, tree removal would be required at the port. Um, some, some vegetation and small trees would need to be removed, uh, also during installation of a three-phase power line, but they do not represent, um, high-quality habitat for local wildlife because they're within maintained, uh, um, power line right-of-way. All tree clearing would be conducted outside of any nesting seasons, uh, generally from November first through March thirty-first to avoid impact to protected bird and bat species. Next slide. Uh, so this slide, uh, provides potential adverse impacts to traffic, land use, uh, and visual resources, um, which generally range from minor to moderate and also a few potential beneficial impacts. There would be some increased traffic during construction from worker vehicles and equipment, but in the long term, there would be benefits from improved traffic flow at the, at the port due to more efficient vehicle processing. No road closures are expected from construction of the three-phase power line, as I mentioned earlier, but again, some secondary small, uh, roads, um, could experience temporary, temporary, uh, delays, um, lessing, less than approximately one day due to any of the boring, um, activities that would require there. The, the Grand Portage State Park, which, uh, we are here today, is located adjacent to the project site, so some minor land use conflicts could occur during construction. Nighttime construction activities, uh, require lighting and could result into some short, uh, short-term impacts on the night sky. In the long term, there could be minor, uh, impacts to the visual landscape from the, from removal of trees and new operational lighting at the facility, although GSA would employ specific design measures to limit, uh, lighting impacts on the night sky, such as downlighting. Local visual quality would be improved through replacing old facilities with improved ones, um, that are designed through a process that engages the Grand Portage Band and integrates feedback and respects local culture. GSA and the construction contractor would work to keep the boat launch area south of the port open during construction. Um, if the access point needs to be closed on a temporary basis, uh, the construction contractor would provide temporary access near the existing location. Construction activities in this area would be scheduled for night work to allow for daytime access. The GSA team would work with the Grand Portage Band and the Travel Council representatives to coordinate any temporary closures if needed. Excellent. Potential adverse impacts from the project on infrastructure and utilities generally range from negligible to minor, with some beneficial impacts. There would be some increased demand on water, wastewater and electricity and telecommunications utilities due to the port expansion. However, there would also be a benefit to the port to upgrade, uh, due to the upgrading of utilities to new, more modernized systems. Socioeconomic impacts would be, would primarily occur during construction and would mostly be due to an increased demand on housing and community services. GSA understand. Ends local housing options are limited and packed concern for the local key. If they would coordinate closely with the contractor and local governments, including the Grand Portage Band, uh, to manage impacts related to a lack of temporary housing. Minor beneficial impacts on, on unemployment and local economy could occur from hiring and temporary relocation of construction workers and the purchasing of supplies and materials locally. Long-term beneficial impacts on earnings employment could occur from a potential increase in tourism by shorter wait times at the port during peak periods. Next slide. Regarding cultural, uh, cultural resources, uh, as Regina mentioned earlier, GSA is, uh, continuing consultation with the Grand Portage Band Tribal Historic Preservation Officer. Um, again, as mentioned earlier, GSA has conducted a historic structure survey and archaeological literature, and ar- archaeological literature search as part of the section one or six process. Um, no adverse effects to any, uh, national, um, uh, register of historic places listed or eligible, um. This, uh, structures, uh, or resources are anticipated, including to the International Bridge. Also, no archaeological resources are expected to be impacted as part of the project, although GSA is proposing construction monitoring during ground disturbance activities. The Grand Portage Band, uh, Tribal Historic Preservation Officer has concurred with GSA's findings as it relates to the project. Um, and GS, uh, the project at the port, I should say, and GSA is continuing consultation, um, with the, uh, Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the project along a three-phase power line. Results of these, uh, processes as well as any mitigation measures will be included in the final EIS. Uh, and then lastly, for human health and safety, uh, potential short and long-term impacts may occur, um, during construction from handling of any hazardous materials and waste, um, although compliance with applicable safety and hazardous waste regulations would minimize the potential for overall risks. Next slide. And the last slide on these tables, um, uh, regarding environmental justice, the project is not expected to have any, um, disproportionate or adverse impacts on environmental justice populations with consideration of impact reduction, reduction measures that would be in place during construction and operation. Construction of a new facility is not expected to impact any known sites that are culturally or artistically significant to tribal populations. Um, while the overall impacts from land disturbance would, would fall disproportionately on the Grand Portage Band, it would mostly be of low intensity or managed to be managed or reduced to low levels. Um, GSA would make it, would, would make a concerted effort to ensure as much soil remains onsite as possible in consideration of Grand Portage Band requests and cultural practices. To address concerns related to construction workers and impacts to vulnerable populations, um, such as sex trafficking and abuse, GSA, uh, was considering implementing an educational awareness plan with the companies and subcontractors it hires for construction. Construction, construction workers would undergo security screenings and background checks to ensure workers with history of violence or criminal activity are prohibited from working on the project. This sums up the main findings, uh, of the projects. Um, GSA has developed additional impact reduction measures as applicable to reduce, um, adverse impacts, uh, on the resources discussed, um, which are identified in more detail in the draft EIS. Um, as, again, as mentioned earlier, GSA invites the public to review the draft EIS and provide input, uh, on the analysis and resource areas of concern so that they can be addressed, uh, during the development of the final EIS. Excellent. So as outlined earlier, uh, we are in the public comment period for the draft EIS, which is more than halfway through, uh, the expected NEPA timeline for the project. The last day to submit comments is, uh, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which is about a month away. Um, GSA will consider these comments when developing the final EIS, which is tentatively, tentatively scheduled to be made, made, made public later in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. A link to the project website has been provided, um, on the meeting handout some of you have here today, as well as in the, uh, chat box. Um, and project updates will be posted at this website as applicable. The formal design process will not begin after, until after the NEPA process is complete, likely in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Next slide. So this, this slide presents the anticipated overall schedule for the project. Um, and as you can see, the NEPA process falls under the project planning and development phase here on the first bullet. Um, again, estimated to be completed sometime in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, following that, GSA would select an architectural engineering firm and initiate the design phase later in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and hope, GSA hopes to begin construction sometime in, uh, spring of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, finally completing the project around July of two thousand and twenty-nine. Or summer of two thousand and twenty-nine, I should say. Um, as briefly introduced earlier, uh, GS, or GSA will hire a design-build firm to complete the design and construction, uh, for the, the land port, um, and GSA again will be collaborating with the Grand Portage Band selection of that contractor. Next slide. So we'll now go over how to provide public comments. Uh, the public comment period provides you, uh, with the public with the opportunity to provide the draft EIS and provide, uh, your feedback. GSA values your input and the opportunity to hear your thoughts and concerns on the project. Um, that is important to guiding the design, the design of the modernized and expanded port, um, and ensuring that it incorporates all public feedback. There are a few ways for you to submit comments, um, to provide any written comments, um, you may mail them, email them, um, at the addresses listed on this slide. Um, these are also listed on your meeting handout. Um, for any emails, uh, we ask that you just include in the subject line, Grand Portage, LPOE, EIS, or something similar. Um, and again, those must be received by December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, for those of you intending in person, um, you may, um, there are comment forms here if you would like to handwrite a comment and provide them to us here tonight. Um, and then again, um, getting up and speaking here in a couple of minutes, which we'll explain on how to, how to do that. Um, for those attending virtually, um, you may, uh, um, speak, uh, there'll be an opportunity for you to, um, uh, raise your hand to speak, um, as well as, um, type a comment through the Q and A feature, um, which again, we'll go over here in a couple of minutes. So this wraps up the presentation, um, and then we'll now move into public comment session. Slide. So before we begin, I'd just like to go over some basic etiquette we ask you abide by. Um, before speaking, please say and spell your first and last name and, uh, include any affiliation if you have one at the start of your comment. Um, please be respectful of participants and presenters, um, and refrain from using any crass or vulgar language or directing any comments towards a single person or group. Um, as, as previously noted, GSA will not be responding in depth to any technical questions during today's hearing, but will provide formal responses in the final EIS. Um, however, GSA will clarify anything presented today relating to the project, the NEPA process, or public involvement opportunities. To make sure as many commenters as possible get a chance to speak today, we ask that you be mindful of your time. Um, we would like everyone who wants to comment to have the opportunities to speak at least once. Um, however, if time allows, participants who have already commented may be permitted to speak again. After all, commenters have had an initial opportunity to speak. Again, a recording of the hearing will be made available and your comments will be included in the project record. Excellent. So we'll now be calling on people to provide, uh, any public comments. Um, commenters who have signed up in person will be called up first, um, followed by those requesting to speak virtually. Um, for those here in person, if you wish to speak and have not signed up already, please do so now at the sign-in table, um, and wait to be called up. Depending on how many people, there's kind of a small group here. If you want to just raise your hand after the folks who have signed up, you know, we can call you up. Um, if you're attending via the Zoom platform, um, you can use the raise hand feature by clicking the button that says raise hand. Um, and looks like a hand and will, uh, that will add you into the queue to speak. Um, I don't think anyone has called in. Everyone's using the Zoom platform, so yeah, you should have the op- option to use the raise hand feature through the Zoom platform. Right, and then, uh, for those on the Zoom platform, um, when we call, we'll call on you by name, um, when it's your turn to speak and sends you a, uh, request to unmute yourself. You'll see a window that pops up that, and you'll see a window that pops up that will let you unmute. Um, please speak slowly and clearly. This hearing is being recorded and transcribed, and we want to make sure we capture everything that you're saying. Um, when you're, uh, for those on, uh, attending virtually, when you're done speaking, please mute yourself by clicking the mute button. Um, but we'll also be, um, helping you mute on your end, as I know this is a lot, a lot to digest here in terms of instructions. For those, again, who wish to provide a written comment, um, on the Zoom platform, you can use the, uh, Q and A, Q and A feature by clicking on the Q and A icon. Um, typing your question and clicking send, um, and then we'll read your comments aloud, um, in the order that they're received. Um, again, as a reminder, please do not use the chat box to submit any comments. Please use the Q and A feature for those, uh, attending virtually. Um, and just a reminder to everyone here in person, uh, GSA staff members will be available after the presentation to discuss informally any, um, questions, concerns, comments, um, regarding the project. Um, so we'll just, uh, take a quick minute, uh, here to, um, change the camera around and make some quick technical adjustments, and then we'll call up, uh, anyone who has asked to speak, so. I'm just going to repeat the question in the microphone. So the we had a question from the crowd. Just is the goal of the project to increase capacity of the port and stuff. So the 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 purpose, the purpose and need of the project is to improve existing efficient efficiencies of the port, the facilities are, you know, you know, very old. Some constructed back in the sixties. I think there may have been some in the nineties that might have been early nineties. But the overall goal would be to, you know, bring the facilities back up to, you know, bring, bring the facilities up to current standards. And there would be, there would be an increase in capacity, I believe, through additional lanes. Yes, yeah, yep. Anyone else like to? Come up and speak.
So yeah, it's proposed to increase the lanes to five lanes now to get through. So it should help reduce congestion after the new land port is constructed. That helps answer your question.
Yeah, the 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 purpose of the project is to to improve during those peak periods in the summer when it gets, you know, when those back when those delays do occur. Anyone else like to get up and say anything? No worries. If not, we just want to, we can turn it over to the virtual audience. So again, if there's anyone in the virtual audience that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature and we will send you a request to unmute. Would you, would you mind going just so the virtual attendees can hear your question? Sorry, I just want to, I want to let everyone at home be able to hear the questions. Just to the podium right there. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe give my name, Agatha Armstrong. So when you were doing the environmental impacts study, did you come across anything that surprised you that made you change your design?
So during the week.
I'm on mute. I need to got a lot of moving parts to move. The the utility easement was outside of the Minnesota Department of Transportation easement. And we had been working really closely. Well, GSA has been working really closely to make sure they stay within that easement. So that was, that was an area that, you know, especially recently, as you know, as you know, some of the that just happened within the last couple of months. Where, you know, we wanted to, you know, work with Arrowhead to make sure that was moved within the easement, just again, to limit any disturbance outside of. You know, keeping it within areas that have been previously disturbed along the roadway. So that would be, I mean, I thought I wasn't really maybe like surprising. I mean, we certainly, you know, because we have been, as you know, we've been coordinating closely with Margaret. You know, she has been very helpful with helping us identify. You know, issues related to like the boat launch that we, you know, we talked about earlier about making sure that stays open. Just trying to think of anything else that.
Oh, did anything come up with Tippo or?
Yeah, so with the Tippo, with Rob, Rob Hall, we've been coordinating closely with him. There were, there is, there is the International Bridge that would this concluded, there was no adverse effects to that, that, that structure. Our terms of archaeological resources, I don't know if Matt, if you could speak to that maybe a little closer. Yeah, and just, I'm just sorry, because I know that the folks at home probably couldn't hear, hear that. But just in, just in summary, there was previous shovel testing done in the project area and essentially no resources identified. And again, part of the reason why we're trying to, we want to stay within that highway sixty one easement, which has been previously disturbed. And but, you know, obviously, you know, there's always the potential for something. So that's why we're, we were recommending the construction monitoring recommendation there. So. Any other? Questions, see another request to come up and speak.
Just have a question, Rob. But how deep was the utility line when you go to the ground? What was the depth for that buried?
I believe it was three feet.
Has there been any concern about the geology encountering pretty hard rock? As you work on burying that line, there's, there's definitely some pretty hard rock material. And is there any anticipation of delays possibly because of that or? Question.
Sure. So yeah, just again, the question for those at home was just to, have there been any concerns over geology or hard rock for burying of the power line? It's definitely something that Arrowhead, the utility company is aware of, especially going over Mount Josephine where there's, you know, bedrock, you know, at the surface. So in that area, that is discussed in the EIS, I believe the the construction technique would be, they would excavate as much that they could in the bedrock there, but they may have to build up to to provide for that. You know, for the coverage of the line there. Through the remainder of the line, the utility line would be within the existing right of way, which those concerns. You know, shouldn't be as, you know, as much as they are, where they are at Mount Josephine, basically.
Thank you.
Any other? Question is, will there be a twenty-four hour nexus lane at this port? And I don't know.
That is, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe that is a part of the CBP requirements for us in this project. He asked if there was going to be a twenty-four seven nexus lane. One of the, one of, yeah, one of the goals for this project is to provide CBP with the flexibility to to use, you know, to to have more flexibility in their, their operations. Whether that's how they process individuals through the port over the border. Or to be able to increase staffing and, you know, utilize more lanes during peak, peak traffic timeframes. The the nexus lane part is is outside of GSA's purview for for how CBP operates the the port following construction. But there is no specific detail associated with a nexus lane in in the port program of requirements at this point. Without being familiar with this, the the specific technology. The the port, the goal of the port is to be flexible so that CBP can increase and decrease technology, change technology as, as it, as it advances. You know, and is going to meet their needs. And ultimately, you know, a nexus lane, I believe, is going to be an operational decision made by CBP. Whether it's during the project or after. They'd be the CBP would make that decision. And if we have to incorporate it, I'm sure we will. If there's changes, but at this point, there is no program of requirements for, for a nexus lane.
Any other questions, comments? And again, a reminder, public comment period is open until December sixteenth. So folks, you know, don't want to provide a comment here tonight, you can email them to Michael. His contact information is on various handout on the board over here. The comment forums also, if you want to handwrite a comment. So so the question was during the construction phase, will that impact the crossing? And I presume you're asking that, you know, will the report will remain open or will it? Will it be delays or? So the the port will remain open during construction. There the, the footprint obviously will be larger than it currently is now, which will allow for phase construction so that the border crossing can remain open. Depending on, you know, the the various phases, there may be some temporary delays from getting across. But again, that would be, you know, dependent on the construction phasing, you know, the intent is to allow the port to remain open fully functional as it currently is right now. Anyone else? Do one last call for virtual attendees. Anyone, if you again like to speak, please, you know, raise your hand. And or use the Q and A feature. One last call for folks in person. Okay. Well, again, the public conference period will be period will be open for the next until December sixteenth. Again, for those at home, the the project website is posted in the chat that has the information to the project handout, the EIS and other information on how to provide any public comment. For those here in person, we'll, GSA staff will hang around until about seven PM. If you have any, you know, informal conversations you would like to have. And we appreciate everyone's participation and attendance tonight. Thank you, everyone.